All right, just a note for anyone tuning in. We are about to start our 5:00 PM pre-commission meeting. We are currently live on Facebook. We'll be starting in about a minute and a half, two minutes. At that point, I will unmute the commissioners and pull up the grid view for everyone on here. This is Rachel Gamble with Public Affairs. We're about to get started in about a minute and a half. Again, for anyone tuning in on Facebook, we are just waiting for the tech side of things to be ready to stream on our website at makeandbib.tv. Makeandbib.us, you'll be able to view the meeting there. For if you know someone who doesn't have Facebook, they can tune in at makeandbib.us. And then once that's ready to go, we will be beginning the 5 o'clock Macon-Bib County pre-commission meeting. Just a reminder for everyone tuning in, we are. Let's see, we are online. We're about to start the 5 o'clock pre-commission meeting. So commissioners, I'm about to unmute all the microphones. And Mr. Mayor, we are ready to go.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's right at 5 o'clock now on Tuesday afternoon, April 21st. And would like to call to order this pre-commission meeting of the Macon-Bib County Commission. Let me read this little same disclaimer and notice that this is pursuant to instructions from the President of the United States, the Honorable Donald J. Trump, the Governor of Georgia, the Honorable Brian Kemp, and the Mayor of Macon-Bib County, Honorable Robert A. B. Rickert, that the Macon-Bib County Commission meeting schedule for Tuesday, April 21st will be available to the Macon-Bib County Commissioners by conference call only for the 5 o'clock pre-commission meeting and the 6 o'clock commission meeting. Commission chambers will be closed to the public and press as we follow the recommendation from the White House to limit the spread of limit public gatherings for the next 15 days in an effort to slow the spread of COVID-19. Therefore, public and press may only access these meetings simultaneously online at www.maconbib.us or www.facebook.com/maconbibcounty. With that having been said, we have a fairly concise agenda for the pre-commission meeting. But I do need to add one item to the pre-commission agenda. And it is the application to be recertified as a city of ethics with the Georgia Municipal Association. Duke, can you or Michael or someone kind of give us the reason why we need to take this up and add it to tonight, please?
I can take that. So GMA contacted about a few weeks ago, I think, and.
Michael, I've lost you. I've lost Michael.
I can, I can finish Michael's comments for you, sir.
Michael should be there. Is Michael, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, carry on.
I think I got muted on accident. I'm sorry.
It was an accident.
GMA contacted us a few weeks back and said that our five-year certification as a city of ethics was expiring this year. And I apologize, I misread the email. I thought that it said that the renewal application was due by June, but it's due by the end of April. We have to get a resolution passed adopting the five ethical principles that are spelled out in the resolution. And we have to send them a letter with a copy of our ethics ordinance, which is in our code. And the five principles that serve others, not ourselves. And one, two, treat all people fairly. Three, use resources with efficiency and economy. Four, create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. Five, use the power of our position well because of our constituents. And so this is a resolution just recertifying that this is a a set of principles that are held by the county and the commissioners and the mayor. And they ask that a majority of the commissioners actually sign the resolution. And so if it is adopted tonight, then I think Janice will make arrangements to, you know, get it signed by at least a majority of y'all. But that's the timeline. I apologize. I misread the email, but it's due by the end of next week. And so we just don't have another meeting to get it passed.
All right, can I get a motion to add this to the agenda for further discussion tonight in pre-commission?
Second Valerie, when?
Got a motion by, second by when, further discussion on adding it to the agenda? If not, all in favor of adding this to the agenda, the signal up saying aye? Oppose say no? The ayes have it, we'll discuss that momentarily. Next item are announcements in an effort to try to keep everybody aware of what's going on. Even though you may already know it, we've asked Gary Wheat to join us tonight to give us some kind of indication of what's going on with the Convention Investors Bureau, better known now as Macon. Gary, are you there and available? You were a little while ago.
He's muted.
Muted.
Yes, we got it unmuted.
Should be unmuted. I just unmuted everyone.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, just obviously where we are unprecedented times. But I will say this, we've got a good group of employees and partners and hotels trying to hold the line. Just to give you an update of where we're at right now, we've got our hotel numbers for March in. And we were down 36% over occupancy over last year. Those are real numbers. The silver lining in that is that nationwide, you're seeing over 50% drop in that month of March from the industry data that we're seeing. In addition to that, last March, March 19th was one of our busiest months of the year. So that 36% is down over 80% or $80 room fee and a 70% occupancy for that month. So we're, we're in the middle of an awareness campaign as well as putting our recovery rebound strategy in place. We started with a July 1 date of holding events. That has now been pushed to August 1st. We do have events holding, meetings holding in August as well as productions. So we're looking forward to that. In addition to that, we're working with healthcare, we're working with daybreak, we're working with trucking companies, National Guard, everything we can to get people into the hotels to be able to look after that tax, look after the economy in that regard.
And I, I'll be, I'll be, we're gonna have some additional discussion, but Gary, that one of the things that I think is difficult for us is that last year, we made the decision to put several agencies on hotel motel tax as opposed to an appropriation out of the general fund during the process. And I'm sure you've already gone to hear from some of them, I have, about hotel motel taxes being reduced and what are they going to do?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've had conversations with when this first went into effect. Basically, we can look at the numbers and see that March 22nd was kind of the cliff for this. We did have conversations about our plan with those partners. We do have a follow-up meeting, Zoom meeting with them for this Thursday, just to review these numbers so that they know what to expect. Right now, that, those payouts or those expenditures or revenues will be paid in May and June for March and April. So that's kind of what we're looking for. We've been in touch with them about when they were in the process of going dark during the first part of the pandemic. We've also talked to them about what they're doing to apply for some of the CARES Act funding and making sure that they have everything they need so that when we do come out of this, they're ready, ready to open, ready to serve our visitors.
Questions, comments from any of the commissioners, Commissioner Watkins, I see you, and then Commissioner Wen.
What is the total, the 36% represent what dollar amount for those, for those agencies?
Um, right now, we haven't dug that deep, Commissioner, because we have to work off of averages right now. What you're looking at is you're looking at what basically was a 45% occupancy that month at a rate of about $72.
Yeah, so the monthly average you expect to see how on a monthly basis?
Uh, right now, what we're hearing from the industry is it's well beyond 50% drops. However, we are working feverishly. As far as right now, you can look at based on last year's collections, last year's collections. You're looking at probably about a 36% drop off.
Yeah, so what was the total last year? I don't have the paper in front of me. What was the total?
Hold on, I'll pull it up real quick.
All right.
So last year, that total payout for March was $474.649 total. So if you do the distributions off of that.
I do.
And count them in, yeah.
So the question, comment, Commissioner Wen, I had you next.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary, thank you for being with us today. It's good to see you. I think the 30% drop, 36% drop is probably a halfway positive, as you said, because it's not as much as some other communities are experiencing. What makes up our, our guests that are staying there? Are they, I know it was medical personnel staying there, some National Guard, that kind of thing?
Yeah, correct. With the interstate, we have seen coming back through. We've spoken and arranged rooms for people coming back from retirement communities in Florida, headed back north to their residence for the summer. We've seen that. We've seen National Guard. We've seen healthcare. We've seen the trucking industry that's still hauling freight up and down the interstate. So we've seen that. Another point that I would make is we're hearing that a lot of our counterparts in Georgia, their hotels went dark. Some of them had closed. Up until today, we had not had a hotel close. We had one that closed today for the time being. And so that was something that we pulled a positive out of.
Are the hotels trying to keep staff on board pretty much?
They, they have had to furlough a considerable amount of their teams and run a skeleton crew for the front desk and just servicing the folks that are walk-ins.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comment?
If not, Gary, thank you very much. Appreciate you being, appreciate your update for the next item on our agenda is the review of tonight's commission meeting agenda. And I'll go through that very quickly with you. They will have the call to order, the six, six approval of the minutes of the previous meetings that have been distributed. We have nine items on the consent agenda. Virtually all of the consent agenda are applications for alcohol license that have been precipitated by a change of ownership, not necessarily it being a new location. There are one or two that are new locations and I'll get to those momentarily. But after the consent agenda, we'll go into old business. There are about five resolutions that deal with the swift certain and domestic violence probation.
Mr. Mayor, Virgil.
What happened to the mayor?
I think the mayor froze. We can fix that.
I got it. Thank you. I don't remember all those hoops.
We're getting IT to check on the mayor's iPad.
I lost mine a few minutes ago. I lost mine a few minutes ago, but it came back up.
Line is fine.
All right, so we're getting the mayor reconnected right now. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Just so everyone watching live is aware of what's going on.
We certainly didn't mean to freeze him. Virgil, you did that.
Yeah, I was just trying to get his attention, move it so.
So while y'all waiting for that, the Patriots have agreed to send Rob Gronkowski to the Buccaneers with Tom Brady. And so Gronkowski is coming back out of retirement. So just further headache for us Atlanta Falcon fans.
Well, the Gronk says he's a physical and mental mess. I don't know how good that's gonna be. He did.
For his fourth round pick, there's more headache for us Atlanta Falcon fans. Yeah. So, so, so Mr. Mayor, you gotta send me that schedule so we can continue this meeting on next time. So we can continue to move Duke and I, you know. So your mayor pro team needs all this information as well so we can continue the meeting. And we don't slow down this people's business.
Mayor, you want me to?
Could he go to Janice's computer?
What if, what if he never comes back, you know?
I have a feeling that Mayor Pro Team orchestrated this.
The mayor pro team can continue all this.
We should have Mayor Rickert back now. I can see his face there.
Oh, I see him.
Mayor Pro Team, did you, did you put a bug, did you put a virus in the mayor's iPad so you could take over?
When I did talk to him about 30 minutes ago, before our meeting, so I think he can handle it and I think the people.
Got me back up and running. Can everybody hear me now?
We can hear you.
Commissioner Watkins, did you have a question or comment about?
Yeah, I was just checking on your agenda. You carried me so fast. Was that the conclusion of the COVID-19 update?
I can, yes, we can certainly do that. And you want to back up and do that before we, what?
I don't know what your plans were. I didn't see it on the written agenda. I wasn't sure where you were headed next in terms of telling me a bit more about our COVID-19 plans.
The excellent point, then let me back up then and kind of give everybody what my impression is of where we are with the, with the COVID-19 situation. I think everybody is going to be familiar that the governor had a press conference yesterday afternoon and announced the reopening of certain businesses that had been previously ordered closed. These are basically personal contact business. Most of his order, the original shelter in place order was left in place and in effect. The major change, of course, was to allow these previously been ordered, businesses previously ordered closed to open under limited circumstances. They are non-critical infrastructure and allowed to carry out minimum basic functions. But that includes seeing customers. That took a lot of people by surprise, including myself, that the governor decided to do this on a statewide basis rather than on a regional basis where circumstances could be tailored to or where the order could be more carefully tailored to the circumstances in existence in that region. I was also a little surprised that he didn't allow any flexibility for local government to add to or take away from his order. So, so we are without the authority to pass any order or legislation that would be in conflict with the governor's order. So that's about where we are now. It is my impression that the governor is, order is set to expire on April 30th, but the state of emergency extends through May the 13th. I think it is notable that even though we as a government are a part of the critical infrastructure, we are also to operate with various precautions, including these teleconference meetings, which indicate that we're to implement teleworking for all possible workers and conduct meetings wherever possible through teleconference. So we're trying to follow those, those orders as we go along. We got, yeah, Duke's got a couple of comments about it as well.
Just one, just one of them, which I think that's you accurately related with the governor's order. Said the two big takeaways for me was, just an echo from me, y'all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Or that we cannot, as a, as a local government, pass anything that is either less or more restrictive than the governor's order. So it takes away our local control. Because people listening live to this would probably want to know that. And the second is the order that was signed by the governor expires whenever the public health emergency order expires by its term. So right now, that's May 13th. So it goes all the way to May 13th unless he terminates it sooner. So the terms of this order would apply as long as the public health emergency order is in effect, which right now is May 13th, unless the governor takes action to terminate it or modify it before then. So that's just my two comments.
Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. The Board of Health that Commissioner Allen and I serve on, we've been meeting regularly and getting updates, stats from Macon-Bib. And up until just recently, we have not been pleased with the amount of data that we have been given. Just recently, we started to get a little bit more information. And yesterday, we had a meeting. And at that time, the Board of Health passed a resolution calling on all elected bodies to do all that they can to reopen in a very careful way. And we were very careful in how we worded that resolution. Now, in light of what the governor did yesterday evening, we're kind of up in the air now. You know, what is the impact of our resolution? And we're supposed to have a special call meeting in the morning to kind of discuss that and see where we are. But we, as a Board of Health unanimously voted to go slow on reopening because we're getting more and more information about new cases. And we found out that more people are dying here, but they're where their residence is. So we've got, I think, two that are actually counted for Macon-Bib, but there are more than that. So there's just so much information that we don't feel like we've gotten until we're nervous about reopening. And we think it's gonna do a lot of harm to a lot of people, especially those things that are being reopened. Hair salons where you write at each other, barber shops, nails. I mean, how much closer can you get? So, oh, I just wanted to share that with my colleagues here because we, we really don't want to take back our resolution asking that we not reopen at this, at this time. So what do we do?
So, if I may follow up.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Martin.
Um. Oh, I think we all saw CNN yesterday and also from the Health Department as Commissioner Lucas just echoed. There's one side saying that Macon-Bib can become a powder keg, I think that the word was used. And then there's the governor's order that seems to contradict that. And I was just, just so I'm clear, if there's anybody that can tell me what is the data saying? And forgive me, I haven't done my true due diligence by going to the Health Department website and looking at the charts myself. But I know you and Joe have been there. So where, what is the data like then, like?
I don't have the figures in front of me, but all that information has been shared with us and the numbers are rising.
Mr. Mayor.
You've got a lot going on in the nursing homes. And the Medical Center Navisont has not released all of their information. Yeah, so that's where we are. We'll get the most up-to-date figures in the morning.
Mr. Mayor.
Let me call on Commissioner Allen and then Commissioner Watkins back to you.
Mr. Mayor, I have not, in yesterday's meeting, I did not understand. Are they still planning to put that hospital outside of Navisont Health? And because of, you know, if they are, you're still looking at some issues coming here in Macon. If they're not, then you might be looking at something else. But it was my last understanding, they're still, the governor's still planning to put something here, put something in Rome. There may be one or two other cities. Do you know if that's still in, in place?
My understanding, Commissioner Allen, is that this 24-bed modular hospital is slated for construction and to be ready for occupancy in the first week of May or by the end of the first week of May is my information.
Would that, does that not give you an indication, Mr. Mayor, that we're not ready yet? If they're talking about 24 additional beds and, you know, in the, in the Medical Center, I mean, I'm not, I'm not at ease knowing that this virus is still out there and can take someone's life. Not one, just one life is bad enough.
I understand your concern. I think we all share your concern. I think we all share your concern, but I think we find ourselves legally constrained by the governor's order.
So there's no way we can, we can, uh, take the, do something with the governor or talk with him or talk to our legislators, uh, to say, look, you know, I know they, they called Trump, President Trump down, when he thought he could open up the country and the governors got together and said, you can't. I mean, is there anything that the commissioners and/or city councils or mayors in this, in this state can say, look, you're moving too fast. I mean, and I want to get back out there as quick as anybody, but I don't want to put myself or my family or anybody else's family at harm's way.
Right, uh, uh, I, I, I'll defer to the county attorney and, and, and let him chime in again. As far as, certainly you can petition the, the governor. You can write letters, you can try to get him on the phone, uh, and send him emails of this, that, or the other and asking him to reconsider. But as far as doing anything from a legal standpoint, I, I don't think we can do that, Duke.
That's correct. I mean, you can certainly petition him, call him, legislators call him. Uh, I know this, we're probably not unique and there, there, there are going to be people in other cities, from what I've heard, in counties, who have their own particular concerns based on where they live. Uh, but as far as the order is concerned, I don't read the provisions that's relevant. Um, uh, I personally have, um, A G A thirty-eight dash three dash two one. Of course, the county can admit, or, 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 that the order was restricted, or, or, is here suspended. And in conjunction with previous order, as we, the suitable action, means that legally, the local government cannot act with respect to anything related to the virus.
Well, I think we're being negligent. We're not looking out for our folks. We don't make any statements, sometimes a strong statement, a resolution or whatever we are able to do. I'm not out for much, but we need to make a statement that says our numbers don't look good. Our folks, we, we are addicted to, uh, for, uh, uh, so, and the numbers keep climbing. Nursing homes, the numbers keep climbing. So we would be negligent, I think, on this, this issue. We want, we want our relatives to die. Uh, we have a staff work. So, uh, do we issue a statement of concern or a request to review, uh, Bibb, I mean, to, to, to stop it? We have done something wrong.
Yeah, I don't know where you're headed with that.
Construction because of a lack of an economy.
Yeah, Commissioner Jones, let me make a suggestion. Why don't we ask the county attorney to draft an appropriate letter to the governor? And have it available tomorrow morning for anybody in the clerk's office that wants to come sign it. And as many commissioners that want to come sign it, we can, we can have a place for you to sign the letter. Or add your signature to it, add a line to it, then let you sign it. And send it out tomorrow. How about that? That way we'll have a letter going and individual commissioners can express their concern and reservation and ask for reconsideration.
I'm okay with that.
I think that's all we can do.
Right, okay. We'll do that. Commissioner Watkins?
And I know I need to be brief because of the time left on the agenda, but I wanted to ask also, what is the plan for Macon Bibb County, the organization moving forward in terms of our employees? Are, I know we still have, of course, all of our frontline guys, and I would like for you to talk a little bit about the plans for hazard pay if this continues. But just moving forward, are you planning on opening back up business as usual following the governor's orders? Or have you established a timeline for those type of things as well? Business licensing, planning and zoning, et cetera, et cetera. Courts.
I think it's fair to say that we're going to do our best to follow the recommendations for critical infrastructure and how it operates. There are a list contained in the governor's previous order of sixteen things, which include providing personal protective equipment as available and appropriate to the function and location of the worker within the business location. And sanitation, implementing teleworking for all possible workers, implementing staggered shifts for all possible workers, holding all meetings and conferences virtually wherever possible. So we're going to continue to try to operate in following these guidelines at least through April the 30th. And I say we follow it through the end of the medical emergency in mid-May. So we'll continue to try to operate until the governor's state of emergency expires in mid-May or whenever, unless he rescinds it sooner. But mid, mid, so that's my intention at this point, Commissioner Watkins.
I like your thoughts on the mid-May. I really do. I wanted to ask a little bit about the hazard pay. You know, the sheriff wrote us a letter and I've been receiving calls. You've seen it happen in other parts of the country. And I was curious, how many employees do we have that we've been unable to implement a teleconferencing or any type of change that are still very much exposed to the public? I think the city of Atlanta classified those people as frontline employees, those being sheriff deputies and fire department folks that are just unable to really have any change in their day to day.
I'm not sure that I've got an answer for your question. How many frontline workers, how many, you know, might be hazardous duty, quote unquote, you know, in contact with the public more so than others? I'm not sure I've got, I've got that answer. And so what I would like to do is to get some additional information and have that available for us next week.
Yeah. Yeah, I won't be able to talk about that in depth next week.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Further comments about that? And we'll try to expedite these remaining items right quick. Rather than continuing through the old business. Well, it won't take but another minute or two after we got the Swift certain and fair domestic violence. There's a an airport beacon at Middle Georgia Regional Airport using one hundred and twenty-three thousand of federal funds, two thousand of state funds and three thousand eight hundred dollars of local funds that was approved by the committee of the whole. There's a quick claim deed to clear up that encroachment issue on the building on Riverside Drive for a three hundred dollar fee for the encroachment and the quick claim deed committee, the whole recommends approval there. A resolution at Pinnacle Park for Lamar Geddes. And Commissioner Watkins is going to work with us on the exact language of that. The supplemental appropriations for the Board of Elections and the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars so that they can acquire this equipment that they need to conduct the election. And then we've got a a three million dollar grant to accept a three million dollar grant from the state for the runway extension project at Middle Georgia Regional Airport. This will be improvements to the secondary runway that will serve as a primary runway during, during the extension construction. And this, Duke, I think you amended this to provide that the industrial authority was going to loan the money to the airport fund with interest as they incurred it using their line of credit and then be repaid by the airport fund as funds become available for that. So we can get that done. Committee of the whole wanted that amendment and has amended, recommended approval. And then we've got this ethics bill that if it gets through momentarily, it'll be the last item on the old business. So having said that, you want me to run through right quick the consent agenda? We've got a new alcohol beverage license for twenty-six fifty Riverside Drive. And that's for beer and wine package sales to go. It is a change of ownership, so it's an existing location on Riverside Drive. I think it's just north of Pierce Avenue on Riverside Drive. The next one is MGM Mark. This is the new one. It's at forty-four thirty-seven Columbus Road. And it's a new establishment to sell in beer and wine package sales to go at that location.
So it's like a new construction?
It's, I think, in an existing building, but it's a new permit. There's no alcohol there now. That's my understanding.
Do they have gas?
No, they do not have gas. That's my understanding. It's at, it's at the intersection of Columbus Road and Mercy University. It was the former site of the Union School, Union Elementary School, but now it's a kind of a little shopping center, a little strip shopping center. So that's, that's that one. And then item C is a PESA Incorporated DBA, the discount zone at twenty thirty-one Sherling Drive. I think that is between it's a, it's a change of ownership in an existing structure. I think it's a convenience store on Sherling Drive.
No gas, right?
That one.
Fuel sold there either, if I'm correct.
It does not have gas.
No gas, Janice. Right, that's, that's.
And I know the reason I'm asking that now, the interest of time, you know, we was working on that moratorium on alcohol. And with the coronavirus and all this distracting, we got distracted by. I mean, this is, this is what I'm talking about.
Well, but again, this is, this is already there. This is an existing structure and a change of ownership that's just triggering the new application. So there's already alcohol there. It's the point that I'm trying to make. Right. The next one is a PSM, one hundred years incorporated doing businesses low low at twenty-four ninety Pineona Avenue. I think that's right there at Eisenhower. It's a change of ownership with alcohol package sales to go and fuel sales. So there's fuel sales there, but it's an existing business with alcohol, just a change.
Oh, yeah, that's a respectable business. Somebody would sell something lucrative thing, but hey.
Yeah, the next one is another new location. This is at Ingleside Avenue and Riverside Drive is a brand new, brand new Shell Station. This is Riverside Shell LLC doing business, Shell Food Mart at twenty ten. It's the old Shoney's Drive-In location, Ingles.
Did he freeze again?
You got a frozen mayor again.
I'll leave him alone.
Mayor's frozen.
Capable and helpful IT department is on it.
You're still frozen. Telling you, Mayor Pro Tem's on it. He's sending those viruses.
I'm quiet today, guys. I'm quiet. I'm just listening.
Don't worry through it. I will say this while we wait for the mayor to come back. I do have some concerns about hazard pay. I just can't see how we can do anything with hazard pay and not include solid waste department. Those folks are picking up our trash every single day. And to put anybody before them just would not be acceptable. Attorney, I thought the board of health superseded the governor. The governor can make provisions, but I thought ultimately it was the board of health that could open and shut people up. And so if we do a petition or a signed letter, I think that needs to not only come from commission, but it needs to come from this entire community for those that support it. So asking commissioners just to come down to sign a letter. I think you can get a consensus here today and we can ask the attorney to write the letter based on a vote of confidence or no confidence in the governor's request. And we can move forward with that. And then we can ask if patrons in this community want to come and sign the letter of support, then maybe they should do that since they're going to be the ones at risk.
Okay, I'm back again, y'all. I don't know what's happening, Jenny, but.
So anybody want to update the mayor on what I just said and suggested? Because I think we find ourselves.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I think what we're finding ourselves is though we're sitting here as commissioners, as though we're coming across in the public, as though we're asking the mayor for permission to do things as opposed to commissioners saying, this is what I want to do. And the attorneys and or the administration just take charge and take the lead and try to implement what we're suggesting to get done. And I just think it's just not coming across as I sit here and listen that it's as though we're on this we're on this Zoom meeting asking permission for something that we all have permission to do. Mr. County Manager? And whether we agree or not, that's what it sounds like to me. And that's what it sounds like to the book.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I, I think the Mayor Pro Tem addressed me on this. We have a preliminary resolution that Michael has already drafted in the last five minutes.
All right.
If y'all would, you know, I can send it around and y'all can do what you want with it in terms of putting on the agenda and considering it. That does not prevent us from also doing a letter. But, but what I heard was that several people wanted to at least look at a resolution. So we have that drafted.
That's good.
I'm going to do them both.
Well, then we'll certainly proceed with the letter and you can sign, sign the letter. And then why don't you ask Michael to see if he can send it, send this proposed draft by email to the commissioners and they can look at it and see what they think. And then if we want to try to add it to the six o'clock, we can do that.
Hey, motion to add it to the six o'clock meeting. Second.
Y'all want to look at the resolution first?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to vote on something I haven't read yet.
Right. Michael, can you send it around?
Yeah, I can, I can put it up on the screen. I can.
That's better.
Yeah, I have sharing enabled. He can do that.
Can you get a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor?
If he can get it up on the screen, y'all can read it. We can certainly do a roll call vote.
Let me see.
You legal folks are fantastic.
There it is.
All right, go to the, who controls that, Michael? You?
Yeah.
Here at the end, go to the beginning.
Okay. This is a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission assessing concerns about Executive Order four twenty twenty oh one issued by Governor Brian Kemp regarding the reopening of certain businesses in Macon Bibb County and other lawful purposes. Whereas April twentieth twenty twenty, Governor Brian Kemp issued Executive Order four twenty twenty oh one, which called for relaxing certain provisions affecting the operations of certain businesses and restricting opportunities for members of the public to interact with one another. And whereas in a press conference on April twentieth twenty twenty, Governor Brian Kemp stated an intent further relax those limiting provisions previously set up in Executive Order four oh two twenty oh one with respect to sheltering and space and another, and in particular with dining service at restaurants. And whereas the Macon Bibb County Commission has concerns that the number of COVID nineteen cases continue to rise in Macon Bibb County and that the anticipated peak dates in Macon Bibb County of COVID nineteen cases is now expected to fall in mid-May. And whereas the Macon Bibb County Commission would ask governor, would ask the governor to allow the Macon Bibb County Commission to enact specific provisions to allow it to reopen at a rate that's supported by local conviction, local conditions and infection and recovery rates. And whereas the resolution will benefit and promote the health, safety, morals and welfare of the citizens of Macon Bibb County. Now therefore be it resolved by Macon Bibb County Commission hereby so resolved by the authority of the same that the Macon Bibb County Commission hereby requests the offer of the governor postponed steps taken to relax those restrictions previously set out in Executive Order four twenty oh one as it relates to businesses and organizations within Macon Bibb County and to authorize the Macon Bibb County Commission to take further actions in response to local conditions in conjunction with the Macon Bibb County Board of Health. And then be it further resolved that upon a resolution, a copy shall be submitted to the clerk to the office of the governor. And the rest of all, just the standard language we include in all the resolutions about if there's a scrivener's error, mayor can take additional actions and carry out the intent of the resolution.
Mayor, they would have to, they would have to add this.
And don't we do that at the beginning of the six o'clock meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so I don't think we can add it now, but I mean, that would be, a motion to add that to the six o'clock meeting is old business would be appropriate.
I do have a question. I have a question about it. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm interested in knowing your feelings about it. And based on, I don't know if you all have received calls from the, from the county manager standpoint who's updated you. Do you feel compelled to reach out to Governor Kemp? Based off of what we may pass at six o'clock or just from what you're hearing from your administration because people are calling? And so just, you know, just want to see what your thoughts were about it. Because I mean, we're, we're, again, like, we're all just asking a question, but you know, you are the lead arm of this administration. So if you're not going you know, be willing to reach out to the governor on our behalf, then, you know, the resolution, then somebody else will need to, you know, step forward and do that. So I really just want to get your thoughts on it.
My thoughts, Mayor Pro Tem, are as I previously expressed, I was a little taken aback when the governor decided to make this a statewide order as opposed to tailoring it to regions based on circumstances that exist within the region. I was also, as I said earlier, a little taken aback by the fact that we have no flexibility and no control over this and can't pass any, any resolution that would amend or alter or change the governor's order. Having said both of those things, I will say that I think this is ultimately going to be a matter of individual awareness and individual responsibility. Each individual is the one that best knows what their personal circumstances are and whether they have any predisposing conditions, whether they are medically fragile. And each person is going to have to make decisions in their own best interest and exercise the responsibility that comes along with that. If they, if they are in the presence on a regular and recurring basis of someone who is elderly or medically fragile, they need to think twice before they go into an establishment and expose themselves where they don't know that they've been exposed, go back and, and transmit this to their loved one. They're going to have to exercise individual awareness and individual responsibility. So ultimately it comes down to each of us to practice all the safe distancing, the, the social distancing, the personal hygiene and staying out of conditions where COVID nineteen can be easily transmitted. It's going to be an individual decision.
I, I just want to, the other side of that is that we know the lower you are on socioeconomic realm, realm, the harder those decisions are you to have complete control of. Like if you're working in our factories and distributions in our plants, you are at risk just because your job won't let you stop. Right. And they're not providing PPE as we know, like, it's, it's a lot more difficult. And when we tell people that the government, the main place that people go for trusted sources of information, that is okay, that is okay. Because that's what we're essentially saying when we remove all our state of emergencies and the like, that they become even more exposed. So I think that's why you're hearing like the concern because for some things and for some people, it is out of their control.
Mr. Mayor, you need a motion for this for six o'clock?
No, we, we, we just going to have to adjourn here and go into the six o'clock motion. What I, I mean, six o'clock meeting, what I would like to do in the waning minutes here is, is to finish going through these alcohol licenses so that you know what that's about. We've got one that's a Lures Wet Bar, that's liquor mixed drinks and beer consumed on the premises. That's in an existing location, but it is a new license because the old one lapped for forty-five days, but they reinstated it within sixty days. So it's, it's an existing location, liquor, mixed drinks and beer consumed on the premises at thirty-six seventy Eisenhower Parkway. And then I think the, next to the last one is Easy Zion Enterprises LLC located at twelve fifty-seven Riverside Drive. And that's a beer package sales to go at that location. That's the old Chevron mark between College and Madison Street on Riverside. It's an existing location, used to have, it's a convenience store with alcohol, I mean, with, with gas to pump. And the final one is Kamisaki LLC doing businesses, the store at forty-two ninety Delwood Drive. That is just beyond Log Cabin on Mercy University on the right-hand side of the street. It's an existing location and this is a convenience store with fuel sales and an existing business, existing building. And they've had beer and wine there before. So it's a, it's a beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Any questions or comments or concerns about any of the?
On the Allures Wet Bar one. You mentioned, you mentioned that I assume that the process became, what, twice as expensive for them by missing the deadline?
They are in the same situation the way we, that we've recently seen with a couple of others. Fountain of Juice, I think, was one where the license, they had to go back through the process. But that, so they're going back through the process. But it's within six, sixty days was the notification that I got.
What was that? Yeah, that was the, what was that? Is it, can we blame the COVID and give them more?
So.
But anyway.
Commissioner, when?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So it's safe to say majority of these with maybe one or two exceptions are just renewals of
Correct.
The sale of the business. Is that right?
Correct.
There's not a lot of.
That's, that's exactly right.
We don't have, all of these are brand new, right, Commissioner Lucas?
Right. So with that having been said, can I get a, can I get a motion and a second? Allen, second by
Jones.
Jones to approve these alcohol licenses, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, so they'll be on the consent agenda for tonight. And finally, very quickly, the, the resolution about the city of ethics and renewing that. Questions, comments or concerns about renewing our certification as a city of ethics with the Georgia Municipal Association? If not, can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved, Slessinger.
When second.
Got a motion by second slash, motion by slash to second by when, further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, so that'll be on our six o'clock agenda for final approval.
We have Judge Hanson also on this call. If anybody wants to ask him any questions about some of those.
Okay, will he be able to stay on through, into the six o'clock meeting? So if there's a need for him? Anybody have any questions about the Swift, I'm advised that Judge Hanson is listening in. Anybody got questions, comments or concerns about any of the resolutions with the Swift certain and fair domestic violence program, the grant program and the administration that we went over?
I'm not, and I'm not opposed to you doing them all in block if you would like to.
Yeah, I agree on that.
Mr. Mayor, I had a conversation with you, Mayor.
Commissioner, when? And then we got to go.
Yes, so thank you, Judge Hanson, for coming because I had a conversation with Jack Cotay this afternoon and maybe he, maybe he talked to you about it. But I wanted, I'm glad you're here in case we had questions about that. But apparently no one does.
Good, good. Okay, Rachel, what do we have to do now? We're about to adjourn this meeting and I think y'all can just stay on and stay tuned and we'll, we'll roll right into the next one. Rachel, is that right?
Absolutely. So we're going to adjourn this meeting and then pull up the graphic to show that it's the six o'clock and you do your thing, Mr. Mayor. We're good to go.
Very good. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion without objection. The pre-commission meeting is adjourned. Y'all stay tuned, hold on.
And we're ready whenever you are to start the next one.
Okay. This is nice. The, let me call to order, let me call to order the regular commission meetings for April the twenty-first. This is the six o'clock meeting and I read we're starting a few minutes late. But let me read the disclaimer and notice again so that it'll be in the, in the record and in minutes as well as advising everyone pursuant to the instructions from the President of the United States, Honorable Donald J. Trump, the Governor of Georgia, Honorable Brown Kemp and Mayor of Macon Bibb County, Honorable Robert A. B. Ruckert. Macon Bibb County Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April the seventh, twenty twenty will be, excuse me, April twenty-first, twenty twenty will be available to the Macon Bibb County Commissioners by conference call only for the five o'clock pre-commission meeting and the six o'clock commission meeting. The commission chambers will be closed to the public and press as we follow the recommendation from the White House to limit public gatherings in order to slow the spread of COVID nineteen. Therefore, the public and press may only access the meeting simultaneously online at www.maconbib.us With that having been said, like call the meeting to order and thank everyone in attendance to be sure that we've got a quorum, even though I've got you, I'll let Janice do a roll call right quick and confirm with the presence of a quorum. And then a motion to add any item to the agenda would be appropriate.
Before, right quick, before she do the Commissioner Tillman is here waiting for Michael's email.
When what?
Waiting for Michael's email. My question was going to be, as Michael.
I don't think, I don't think he was going to send you an email. I think he went over it, looking at it on.
All right, here.
Commissioner Bibbins. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Lucas.
Here.
Commissioner Slessinger.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
And Commissioner Wynn.
Present.
Sure, we have eight out of nine commissioners on the line and of course I'm here, so that's nine out of ten, more than enough to have a quorum. First item would be the call to order. And Commissioner Slessinger, can I ask you at this point to do an invocation for us so that we kind of focus our hearts and minds on the business at hand? Please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let us pray. Our God and Creator, we thank you for the many gifts that you bestowed upon us in our lives for life and health, for work and rest, for home and love and friendship. We pray that you will bring comfort to those who have succumbed to their families, to all who mourn in their passing. We, we pray that you will give strength to those who are We, we pray that you will give strength to those who are battling the virus at this time. And we pray that you will shield us from contracting the, the virus that is very much a plague upon our society and our lives these days. We pray that peace and goodwill will obtain among the inhabitants of our county, our, our state, our, our land, our world, and that belief in you, even in these troubled times, will continue to spread its many blessings among us, exalting us all in righteousness. Amen.
Amen. Uh, next item uh, on our uh, agenda uh, would, would be to add an item to the agenda. I, I understand that at pre-commission m- meeting, uh, a resolution was prepared at the request of several of the commissioners, uh, asking and requesting that the governor look again uh, uh, at Macon Bibb County, uh, and, and whether or not changes could be made in his order for our, again, is there a motion to add that to?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Under Old Business? By Commissioner Allen and, and Commissioner Lucas, uh, further discussion about adding it to the agenda for action tonight under Old Business? Hearing none, all in favor of adding it to the agenda under Old Business for action tonight? Uh, signify percent aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it and it'll be added as the last item under Old Business of, of our meeting tonight. Uh, next, we have approval of the minutes, of the minutes of the pre-commission meeting held on April the seventh and the regular commission meeting held on April the seventh. They've been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections uh, that anybody would like to note? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the April seventh meeting?
So moved, Slesinger.
Got, got Wynn and Slesinger's motion and, and second to approve the minutes, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Um, and next, we have a, a number of items, uh, nine, I believe, on the consent agenda. Um, we have discussed them in the committee of the whole and as I indicated before, uh, I think seven out of nine uh, are due to a change of ownership. In other words, the, the building is in existence, the alcohol license was previously there. This is just a change, a change of agent or ownership that's precipitating the, the new license request. All of these uh, uh, applications are accompanied by the, the necessary um, items that include the uh, certification by the sheriff of a satisfactory background check um, into the license, licensee, the agent. Uh, the certification from the uh, business development services, that the appropriate fees have been tendered for the alcoholic beverages to be sold, a certificate of planning and zoning compliance, uh, that the appropriation is uh, or the location is appropriate. Um, a uh, certification by the county engineer, that the distance requirements between the, uh, school buildings, campuses, et cetera, are all com- compliant, that the location is compliant with all of this, and the ad that ran as appropriate um, in the, the, the telegraph. These items, the first one is C W J, uh, G Food Mart Incorporated, doing businesses, G Food Mart at twenty-six fifty Riverside Drive, is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The second is by MGM Mart LLC, doing businesses MGM Mart at forty-four thirty-seven Columbus Road. Um, that's beer and wine, uh, package sales to go at that location. Uh, item C is by P E S A Incorporated, doing businesses Discount Zone at twenty-thirty-one Sherling Drive. That's for beer, a package sales to go from that uh, location. Uh, item D uh, is P S M One Hundred Years Incorporated, doing businesses Lolo Number One at twenty-four ninety Panona Avenue. That's for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. Uh, item E is uh, an African for Riverside Shell LLC, doing businesses Shell Food Mart at twenty-ten Riverside Drive, beer and wine package sales to go from that location. Item F is S V P Investment LLC, doing business as Shell, six-twenty-seven Sherling Drive. That's for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Item G uh, is Allures Wet Bar LLC at thirty-six seventy Eisenhower Parkway. That's for liquor, mixed drinks, and beer to be consumed on the premises at that location. Item H is uh, Easy Zion Enterprises LLC, located at twelve fifty-seven Riverside Drive. That's for beer, package sales to go at that location. And finally, you got a, uh, Comma, Kamash, Kamashchi LLC, DBA, The Store at forty-two ninety Delwood Drive, Suite B. That's for beer and wine, uh, package sales to go at that location. Uh, after consideration, the committee of the whole recommends issuance uh, of those licenses as requested. Is there further discussion? Hear, hearing none, uh, all in favor of the issuance of those licenses, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, those licenses will be issued as requested. Um, next item uh, on the agenda then is Old Business. And I'll ask the clerk uh, to read um, the, the first uh, of several uh, resolutions um, concerning uh, the uh, Swift Certain and Fast Supervision Program for violent, domestic violence intervention. Um, would you read item A, uh, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with the Southern Center for Choice Theory LLC to provide counseling sessions to participants on swift, certain, and fair domestic violence probation who have been evaluated for placement in the Family Violence Intervention Program with funds from the Swift Certain and Fair Supervision Grant and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there a, a, a further motion to, to read all of these in block uh, and vote on them once?
I, I wanna do, I would move to do that, please.
Second, Commissioner, Commissioner Wynn wants to, to have a, a, a single vote on the entire block. Is there a second to that?
Second, Slesinger.
By Slesinger, second by Slesinger, uh, then we'll proceed unless there's objection, we'll proceed in that, in that form, that fashion. Good, uh, then, Madam Clerk, would you read item B through? Uh, F, B through F, please.
I will. A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Laurie M. Dodson, Attorney at Law LLC, to provide criminal legal representation to participants on swift, certain, and fair domestic violence probation with funds from the Swift Certain and Fair Supervision Grant, not to exceed a total amount of five thousand dollars and for other lawful purposes. Item C, a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Law Office of Amanda R. Richardson LLC to provide criminal legal representation to participants on swift, certain, and fair domestic violence probation with funds from the Swift Certain and Fair Supervision Grant, not to exceed a total amount of five thousand dollars and for other lawful purposes. Item D, a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with the Southern Center for Choice Theory LLC to provide individual and counseling services to participants on swift, certain, and fair domestic violence probation with funds from the Swift Certain and Fair Supervision Grant and for all other lawful purposes. Item E, a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with the Step After Evidence-Based Programming LLC to provide counseling sessions to participants on swift, certain, and fair domestic violence probation who have been evaluated for placement and moral recognition therapy with funds from the Swift Certain and Fair Supervision Grant and for all other lawful purposes. Item F, a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with S and K Professionals Limited Liability Company to provide individual counseling services to participants on swift, certain, and fair domestic violence probation with funds from the Swift Certain and Fair Supervision Grant and for all other lawful purposes.
Yeah. The committee of the whole recommends approval of, of items A through F. Is there further discussion on items A through F? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of items A through F, signify by saying F?
Aye.
Aye.
F.
Signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Tell me, I'm.
Need a vacation.
You're listening.
He's frozen again.
Yeah, he froze again.
You're frozen again.
See, that's what you get.
Yeah, you're frozen again.
At least he's smiling.
But your, your, your picture's frozen in a perpetual smile.
Yes.
Tell your picture that.
I can just see the comments.
Yeah.
I got a picture.
Wow, okay, I'm back. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so there was no further discussion on items A through F. All in favor of resolutions A through F, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, uh, items A through F are adopted. Um, that brings us to item G, uh, which is a new beacon uh, at Middle Georgia Regional Airport. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the purpose of constructing an airfield beacon at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport to be funded in the amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents in federal funds, two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents in state funds, and three thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and eight cents plus any project overruns to be paid as a local match from the airport fund, enter fund, local match line item, and for other lawful purposes.
So the committee of the whole recommends approval. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, n- next is a, a resolution to authorize a quitclaim deed to cure an encroachment on property on Riverside Drive. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the sale of real property consisting of zero point zero 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 six two two acres located at one oh two three dash one oh five five Riverside Drive to Causey Riverside Properties LLC for the fair market value of three hundred dollars and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, and next is a resolution to authorize the placement of a plaque in Pinnacle Park in honor of Lamar Geddes Jr. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the mayor and board of commissioners of the county of Macon Bibb, Georgia, to authorize the placement of a plaque or monument in Pinnacle Park in appreciation of and honoring Lamar Geddes Jr. for his outstanding contributions to Macon Bibb County and the Middle Georgia area and for other purposes.
Uh, the committee of the whole recommends approval. And as I understand it, this was a committee amendment to, to, uh, get, vert, Commissioner Watkins to help us with the language and, and limit the expense to five hundred dollars.
Yes.
Is a, is a further discussion on the resolution as amended?
Okay, so is the amend, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Wynn.
Is it amendment in, are we including the five hundred dollar limit in this?
Right. Uh, if I'm.
It just doesn't read that way yet.
Yeah, it does. Now, it's, it's on the, uh, do you have it in front of you? It's on the third page. I'm gonna read it by the, here's the amendment, be it resolved by the mayor and the board of commissioners of the Macon Bibb County hereby so resolved by the authority saying that a plaque or a monument not to exceed a cost of five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Encourage by.
And that's what we're voting on, is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Is there further discussion on, on the resolution as amended? Hear, hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, the, the resolution as amended is adopted. Uh, uh, next is a supplemental appropriation to the Board of Elections to buy equipment and supplies for the upcoming election. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred dollars to the Board of Elections, ballot printing, operating supplies, toner cartridges, and small equipment line items to provide for the purchase of equipment and supplies necessary for conducting the twenty-twenty elections and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is the acceptance of a grant for three million dollars with a match of one million dollars for improvements at Middle Georgia Regional Airport. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept state funding assistance from the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of three million dollars for the purpose of improving and rehabilitating the fourteen thirty-two runway at Middle Georgia Regional Airport with a local match in the amount of one million dollars plus payment of design cost in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and seventy-six cents to be paid from the airport funds held in trust by the Macon Bibb County Industrial Authority and for other lawful purposes.
And as I understand it, this was also amended by the committee of the whole uh, to include language about the industrial authority loaning money uh, to the airport fund with interest as accrued if they use their line of credit to be repaid back to the industrial authority by funds from the airport fund when those funds become available from future rent payments. Okay, is there further, is there further discussion about the resolution as amended?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Commissioner Jones, yes, sir.
And you said if they, if they have to borrow the money, they, they told us they don't have the money. So I guess it, maybe should read instead of if, should they? Because they are gonna borrow the money, they told us that.
Right, they're gonna u- use their line of credit, right.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution as amended is adopted. Um, and next, we have a resolution uh, recertifying Macon Bibb County as a city of ethics with the Georgia Municipal Association. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission recertifying the adoption of the five ethic principles of the Georgia Municipal Association's Certified City of Ethics Program to certify Macon Bibb County as a city of ethics and for other purposes.
Uh, the committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Um, and you will need, please, uh, to, at your earliest convenience, to come by and sign. We have to have individual commissioners, signatories on the resolution before we send it to GMA. So Janice will have that in the clerk's office and at your earliest convenience, come by and, and please sign that. We have to have a quorum of at least five, uh, six to, to, to sign, sign it before we send it to GMA. Uh, uh, finally, we added an item uh, to the agenda. Um, Michael, I don't think it.
I got it.
Oh, good, Janice says she can read it, read it. Oh, good. Janice says she can read it, read it by caption. This, this is a, a, a resolution asking Governor Kemp. To relook at the circumstances in Macon Bibb County concerning his most recent order.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission. Expressing concerns about the executive order 04.20.20.01. Issued by Governor Brian Kemp regarding the reopening of certain businesses in Macon Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Yes, sir. Before we vote on this, I just, I know that there were some concerns about people disagreeing on this, our committee, I mean, our commissioners, but. I feel the same that you, the same way, the same things you expressed earlier and when you were asked how you felt about this, that. Hopefully our citizens will make up their minds about how to act and react to what the governor has asked. Or permitted us to do and use their best judgment without us having to tell them what to do. I think it's their right to do what they want to do. Their best judgment on who they might expose or themselves might expose, but I, I think that's, I think that's the way I should, I look at it.
Is it, is there further discussion?
Roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Allen wants a roll call vote, so I'll ask, ask the clerk, is there further discussion before we get to the vote?
Uh, uh, one more thing. I think when you read it in full that the, there was indication about. The numbers growing daily here and. I, I don't, I don't think we have some numbers confirmed, the recovery numbers, the numbers of cases that have been. Occurring in our community. I think there's some numbers missing there and that's another concern of mine that our numbers are not in there.
Very good. Let me get the clerk to, to.
Commissioner Jones first.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Jones, sir.
Yes. Did you see, or Henry, just.
Yep, go ahead, sir.
To that and, and, you know, there's been all kinds of problems with the data. And this special organization out of Washington State that, you know, all the predictions, they've, they've all been wrong. It's not, it's not minimized that we don't want anybody to die. Out of 200 plus cases in Bibb County. Over 76 of those came from one nursing home. And Commissioner Lucas made the point. Well, if they're from another county and, and, and you need to know many. Many, several patients were transferred here. To HCA from Dollywood County. Where the figures are astronomical, unbelievably so. Because people didn't practice social or physical distance, I guess it's called in the Old Testament, but. These. Again, not to minimize it, but if you live in another county and you go to Navisont or HCA. And then you unfortunately pass away. Then yes, it's attributed to that county and it should be. That's the only way that makes any sense. So I have concerns, but I also agree with your sentiments. It's up to us individually. It's up to us to educate others that each person has to take responsibility. For their own actions and wearing gloves and wearing masks. And not getting any closer to six feet if, if at all possible. So it, it is a matter of individual responsibility. That's because this is something we're going to have to live with for a while. Restricted or not restricted, because we're going to have, the virus is still here. We may flatten the curve, but the virus is still here.
Very good. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that let's not forget that we have children who are involved as well. And they don't, they aren't at a point where they can exercise that responsibility. And then we have older folks. Who are dependent on others for their care. 24/7. So we're talking about those folks as well, so. We're, we're up and able to make those decisions and look out for ourselves and do what's right, most of us. But let's think about everybody in our community and just, just. Take it from me that we are not ready to open this community back up, totally. We still need to. Encourage our citizens and let them know that they're putting themselves at risk and their children. And the others that they love and care for when they don't wash their hands regularly. When they don't wear their mask and when they don't stay away from each other. There are too many people in this community who are still getting together and having parties. And spreading the virus all over the place. There's too much stupidity going on. In too many places and we don't want any of our folks to be the victims of this stupidity, so. As a governing body, I just feel like we need to do something. That says that we're concerned and we want the citizens to be concerned as well, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Further, further discretion, Commissioner Jones?
No, so I'm just saying I agree. We, it, it's up to us to look after elderly, look after children. It's up for us and those who are responsible. And unfortunately, there are some people acting in a stupid manner out there and, and they're being detrimental to the health of others and that's. We need to, and continue to harp on that.
And, and, and Mr. Mayor. I think the thing that disturbs me the most. About the governor's, I'll, I'll, I'll call it an edict. Is that it really usurps power from, you know, the local authority to, you know, deal. With the, with the situation. I, I mean, I'm, I'm all for. You know, keeping our, you know, restaurants open and people, people working. So that they can provide for their, for their families. But I, I, I just think that, you know, if, if we get a spike here. According to my understanding of what Duke told us before. We are really powerless at this point to act immediately and do, and do something. Going to be effective for our local community, so. That's my concern is that, you know, all of a sudden. We've become a, a, as a body powerless to, to deal with. Circumstances that may or may not occur here and it may be different than. What's going on in, you know, other communities around the, around the state. I, I'm just bothered by the fact that. We just don't have the ability at this point to react if, if need be.
Very good. Anybody, Commissioner Wynn, got your hand up again?
Don't let anyone know that, think that I'm not concerned about this. I am concerned. However, we've been under a shelter in place order for a while now and people, as someone's already commented, are out there still partying, so people aren't paying attention anyway. And I, I, I still go back to the fact that this, this takes the rights of what the people want to do, good or bad, stupid or, or smart. It takes it away and if we pass this, is it going to change anything because the governor has already. Already stated what we're in, what we're supposed to do, what we're allowed to do and if we sign this resolution and, and send it to him. Will it change anything for us at the local level?
Thank you. I got Commissioner Allen next.
Mr. Mayor, this just came across the news feed I showed you earlier. The Georgia Department of Community Health has reported six COVID-19 related deaths at a nursing care facility in Macon. And as of Monday, there were a total of 181 in the facility. But now there's six more that's died. It's just come, they just come across there.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. I'm sorry, sorry to hear that, obviously. If further discussion? If not a roll call vote has been requested, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote? Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote? Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Wynn, how do you vote?
No.
They, the, it's seven, seven yes, one, one no, the, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us down to a new, new business and in new business got a resolution. To appoint Mary Brooks Warren to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board. Got the second resolution, appoint Karen W. Hicks to the Fort Hawkins Board. Item C on the new business is a resolution to execute an amendment. To Macon Bibb County's agreement with Cherry Street Capital Fund to LLC for the construction of new solar canopy projects. At the office of the Bibb County Tax Commissioner. And the South Bibb Recreation Center. To provide solar power and parking improvements with no added cost to, to Macon Bibb County. Item D is a resolution to amend. The Macon Bibb County Attorney's Office organizational chart. For purposes of adding a new Assistant County Attorney for Litigation and Procurement position. And a new paralegal position. And finally, an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of $92,960. To the Tax Commissioner's Office, small equipment and improvements and capital improvements line items. To provide for the purchase of state required scanners and for equipment and construction costs related to the transfer. Of business and alcohol licensing function. I'm going to refer all of those to the committee of the whole. I have, will try and, and to, to see if we can't have a committee of meetings during the meeting next week. To take up any additional items of concern. And so we'll try to accommodate that as we can. There may be other items that come down from the commission, the county attorney's office later this week, so be sure and check the agenda that comes out on Friday afternoon. Further comments or points of, of, of personal privilege, Commissioner Wynn?
Point, point of personal privilege. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wanted just to say that I've missed seeing our co-commissioner Bert Bivens on the Zoom meeting, so I pray that his family. And he are doing well during this time.
Well said, well said. Other points of personal privilege? Excuse me?
She can always call and check on him.
Commissioner Jones, did you have something else?
Yes, sir, just to say, you know, I don't know if the resolution's going to do any good. I do have the concern. I, I do wish the governor had given us flexibility. I don't ever like it when the state, at the state level, they preempt our authority. I think he should have done like President Trump did and that is he gave the governors. The authority to do, gave them some suggestions and guidelines, but he allowed them to. Suit those restrictions to what they needed in their states and that's what I wish he had done because I don't ever like it. When our authority is preempted at the state level, so I go on the record and say that.
Other points of personal privilege? If not, we've reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.